Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You're attending the Livingston County Board of Commissioners meeting for August 26, 2024. I'm calling the meeting to order. We'll start with a moment of prayer, Commissioner Deaton.
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to start by introducing my son, Grant Deaton. He will deliver tonight's prayer on my behalf. Grant is entering his senior year at Trine University in his field of studies, electrical engineering. Grant came to me this spring of this year and wanted to skip interning in the automotive industry, and he spent this summer with every heart. So Grant and approximately about 150 other young adults entered training in Grand Rapids for two weeks, broke into groups, and spent the summer ministering throughout North America and Europe. Over the last week, we are seeing our children head back to school. I see that it's important for the youth of our county in America to see young leaders speak on faith. Grant, please come up to the microphone.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I just feel honored to be here today and to just enter into this meeting with prayer. And I believe that this is how we should always enter into every day. So we're going to be able to enter into this evening with prayer. So let's bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father and Lord, I just want to thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day, God, for the air in our lungs, for the birds chirping, for the sun shining, Lord, just for another day, Lord. It's just a testimony of your grace and your mercy and that you have a plan for us, God. It's just a gentle yes that you give us each and every single day that we get to enter in, Lord, knowing that you have a plan for us here today, God. So I thank you for all the men and women here in this room today, Lord, that want to see change, that want to see better in their community, God, Lord. And I just pray that, Lord, you would be the forefront of all that we think, all that we say, all that we do, Lord. May we put you in the front, God. So, Lord, we just thank you that you're here in this place, Lord, that you will allow everybody in this room just to be your mouthpiece, just to allow your will to be done in this place, God. So, Lord, we just, we seal this meeting with your Holy Spirit. It's your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Grant. If everyone would rise, we'll recite together the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you call roll?
Commissioner Jay Dric.
Here.
Commissioner Doug Helzerman.
Here.
Commissioner David Domas.
Here.
Commissioner Frank Sample.
Here.
Commissioner Wes Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Roger Deaton.
Here.
Commissioner Martin Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Nicholas Jules Fiani.
Here.
Commissioner Jay Gross.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We're on to agenda item number five, approval of the agenda. May I get a motion?
So move Deaton.
Support Gross.
Moved by Commissioner Deaton, supported by Commissioner Gross. All those in favor kindly voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's a nine to zero unanimous approval of the agenda. Item number six on our agenda this evening is employee recognitions. The first one, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Leslie Stoltz. Would you come up? Mic's wrong.
We've been informed that they can't see you on Zoom if you hide over there.
I'm going to continue hiding. Leslie has been employed by Livingston County for nearly 33 years. She's currently employed by the courts as our district court coordinator. As the coordinator, Leslie assists the district court administrator with the daily administration operations of the district court, everything from being a support liaison between the administrator and division leaders to assisting in various operational areas, stepping in when there's complex issues, and helping with training of new staff. Leslie received two nominations that really got to the heart of what made her an excellent candidate for this recognition. Quote, "Truly a team player pitches in whenever she might be needed without even being asked. She never seeks appreciation or thanks. She just does what needs doing. She's an invaluable asset." Quote, "Provided outstanding customer service by going above and beyond to help me even though I was late, also just by being extra kind." Thank you. The committee felt that Leslie makes being an outstanding employee seem easy because she does it so expertly, probably doesn't even know she's doing it because she's been doing it for so long. But it was something beyond her team focus, outstanding customer service, kindness, and professionalism that the committee saw and wanted to recognize. It was the example that she set for other employees. It was the face of the court that she presented to the public. These more tangible assets that she brings to the table are what makes the workplace better, the court operate much more efficiently, and are what make Leslie a recognition winner. The certificate reads Employee Recognition Award Certificate Presented to Leslie Stoltz in appreciation of her outstanding service, Livingston County Employee Recognition Program, second quarter 2024. You may clap. Rosa? You asked to be recognized so you could deliver remarks.
Yes.
Come on up.
You did very well. I don't know if I can do much better. I actually wrote up a statement. I'm the district court administrator, so I have the pleasure of working with this lovely young lady. She is a longstanding employee with the 53rd District Court. On December 19th of this year, Leslie will have 33 years of service. In 1991, she was hired in as deputy court clerk working in District Court's Criminal Division and continued that role until 2004, when she was promoted to Criminal Division Leader, where she succeeded in that role for 17 years. In 2022, Leslie was promoted to Division Coordinator, where she assists with managing the operations of the district court and continues in this role today. Leslie has proven to be an effective leader, and it's evident in her dedication and commitment to always giving 100%, whether it's assisting a Division One short staff, lending her training expertise to a new clerk, or jumping in on moments' notice to court record for our judges. She is very well respected among her peers, the public, judicial officers, and our stakeholders. She is the very definition of a team player, always bringing her best to work every single day. Leslie, employees like you make the organization what it is today. Congratulations on this well-deserved recognition. Great. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. Congratulations.
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 I gotta wait.
She's worth the wait.
Spencer Catlett here. Special fun up here, young man.
So I could read this, but why don't you give everybody a two-second on what you do at the animal shelter?
I clean dog poop.
It's much more eloquent. He does way more than that. So he's responsible for the well-being and cleanliness, yes, of the kennels and the shelter area. He also plays with the animals. He is there feeding, watering, caring for them, socializing with them, et cetera. But here's what his coworker said, and this is kind of cool. Spencer goes above and beyond each and every day. He spends his own time repurposing items that we cannot use and donates them to local goodwill or creates special adoption bags for those that come and adopt a pet. He genuinely is happy, and he's positive, he's fun, and I look forward to working with him. That is awesome. So two things that stood out to the Employee Recognition Committee. He has a ongoing spirit of giving, and he is a benevolent person. Those are wonderful qualities. We are so proud to have you here at the county, and I thank you very much. The certificate reads Employee Recognition Presented to Spencer Catlett, yada, 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 2025. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're now on agenda item number seven, correspondence. 7A reads Clinton County Resolution 2024-12, opposing MDHHS plans to implement new conflict-free access and planning strategies in Michigan. Can I get a motion to put on file?
So move Helzerman.
Support Gross.
Been moved and supported by Helzerman and Gross to place on file. Voice vote, all in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero, it'll be placed on file. Item number eight is called to the public. The call of the public is where any member of the public can come forward and tell us something that they think's important for us to know. Wide range of topics available.
We have no comment cards.
No comment cards from our room. Krista, do you see anybody with their hand up?
I do, Commissioner. We have Randy Clausen.
Randy, if you'd unmute yourself, you may unmute comfortably when you're ready to begin. Go ahead.
Hello, commissioners. I want to thank you for having this opportunity to allow public comment. We don't know each other real well, but you do know from my prior talks with you that that is really important, and I'm passionate about a better bus system. Now, this is not a complaint about lets, their drivers, or management. Actually, they provide an amazing service, but in my estimation, it is about you not contributing a greater amount for the local match so that we can have a better bus system. Your contributions fall under what I would say the moral law. Do unto others as you would have them do to you. In 2024, the Alice Report found that 28% of households in Livingston County still struggle to make ends meet. Perhaps you never lived through that kind of trauma, but I have. Your budget choices are imposing that trauma on 28% of the households in our county. If there was an adequate bus system, these households would not have to keep a car running and insure. They would ride to work on an adequate let system, and that would stretch their budgets, enabling the purchase of needed items for their families. So when was the last time you had to wait payday to payday for an item need? How long ago did you, were you 31, the average age when these neighbors become parents? What did you, what do you do to stay connected with your understanding of the realities experienced by your constituents? You have the opportunity to receive an 85% return on the money that you designate for an adequate bus system. Are the 28% of the households in your view, when you set your budget for the adequate let's bus system? What can your, what can your constituents do to help you realize the moral high ground of making decisions so that Livingston County has an adequate bus system? The disadvantaged and transit-dependent people in our community need to have a better bus system. In visiting a nursing home, I observed a youngster saying goodbye to his grandmother, who was in a wheelchair near the door. The child was leaving, and he turned back around, and he said to his grandma, Grandma, make good choices. I'm sure that that child must have heard his parents requesting that from him many times. But I say to you, commissioners, make good choices.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman Dric, we do need her location, her address.
381 Dorchester Hall, Michigan.
Thank you. Our record's complete. Krista, is there anyone else with a hand up on the Zoom?
No, Commissioner, there is not.
Thank you. The call of the public, number one, is now concluded. There's a second one at the end of the evening tonight. We're at item number nine, approval of minutes. We have 9A meeting minutes dated July 22, 2024, and meeting minutes dated August 12, 2024, and closed session minutes dated August 12, 2024. Three sets. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Support Deaton.
Moved by Commissioner Fiani, support by Commissioner Deaton. All those in favor of approving at 9A, 9B, and 9C as a package kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero, as a package, they are approved. We're at item number 10, which would be tabled items from previous meetings. I have none, but if any commissioner wants to bring one forward, now's the time. Zero on number 10. We're at number 11, Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Deaton.
Thank you, Chairman. I have two. The first one, on the 14th of September, Livingston's own Fillmore Park will play host to the Second Annual Never, or 9/11 Never Forget Trail 5K Fun Run and Walk. I urge everybody to please visit and sign up at the county website. There are only about 300 spots. We're two-thirds of the way through that, and I wanted to thank Howell Recreation, our Livingston County Veteran Services for leading this event. Last year was very successful, and I expect this event to be even, even greater. I'd like to have a special thank you to Director Ramon Baca, who I mentioned leads this event and handles the budgeting, the volunteers, promotion, coordination with the county and its services. He's done a great job. So that was my first one. The second one, I sit on the County Veterans Memorial Committee. We met last week, and this had been a pre-construction meeting. This committee has been meeting since December of last year, and with the improvements in front of the courthouse here to the memorial in the southwest corner. The granite will be delivered on time. The bronze plaques have been delivered, and we're expected unveiling to be on Veterans Day on November 11. I wanted to thank some of the committee members. There's a lot of folks working on this. This is all done by donations, by the way. Janelle Smith with Howell Air Chamber of Commerce, Howell Recreation, Chairman Jay Dric's on that committee as well. Thank you. Landscaping, Kevin Eggleston, Director of Facilities, very helpful. The ringleader of this was the city manager, Herb Suda, who put us all together in December and asked us to start working on this. And then again, Ramon Baca, Director of Livingston County Veteran Services, took the lead and has been herding cats to get this all together for the last 10 months. So that's my reports, Chairman. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other reports? Commissioner Jay Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Friday morning, I attended the Ageways Board of Directors meeting. Ageways is the current name for what used to be called AAA Area 1B on Aging. I was brought to my attention that on Saturday, October 5th, they're going to have a family caregiver connection event. It's an opportunity for caregivers to learn, link, and enjoy lunch. It's a free event that's going to be held at the Suburban Collection Showplace in Novi. Keynote speaker is going to be Ms. Christie McDonald, who is an anchor at Channel 4 in Detroit. She has a wealth of personal experience being a caregiver. For many years, she was taking care of her husband who had colon cancer, and sadly, he passed away not that long ago. So she has a lot of insight into what's required for caregiving. I've got a bunch of these flyers, a lot of information. I've got some available if anybody would like to take one or two or more to pass out to friends, anybody who may be involved in caregiving. This would be a really good event. Also have copies for my colleagues. Thank you.
Welcome. Any other reports? Commissioner Smith, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had, I had the honor today of participating in a day-long fundraiser for Freedom River. Freedom River is a camp, a place of respite for our veterans, and they are, they've acquired a nice piece of land with about 1,000 feet along the Huron River down in Green Oak Hamburg area. They do a great job. They are looking to now put up some, some facilities for the veterans to be able to stay for more than a day in. And just very worthwhile. And again, I'm just so pleased that our county as a whole supports our veterans the way they do, and what a great place to live and grow and, and be a part of. Thank you.
You're welcome. Further reports? Seeing none, we will close out 11, and we're on to item number 12 on the agenda. It's called Resolutions for Consideration. 12A reads 2024-08-104. It's a resolution to certify officer and employee delegates to the 2024 Municipal Employees Retirement System Annual Retirement Conference. It's brought to us by Human Resources, Jennifer Palm Bush. Does anyone need?
So move Sample.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Sample, supported by Fiani. And does anyone need further question or analysis? Seeing none, I think we're prepared to vote a closed discussion. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's a nine to zero unanimous vote for 12A. We're on to 12B, which is 2024-08-105. It's a resolution authorizing acceptance of U.S. Department of Energy's Energy Efficiency and Conservation's block grant voucher program funds for replacement of HVAC equipment, brought to us by Facility Services and Kevin Eggleston. May I get a motion?
So move Deaton.
Support.
I've heard Commissioner Deaton and support by Commissioner Domas. Any need for further questions, analysis, comment? Seeing none, I'll close discussion. All those voice vote kindly say aye if you're in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Speak now. Hearing none, nine to zero, that passes. We're on to 2024-08-106. It's a resolution authorizing the return of community development block grant program income to the state of Michigan, brought to us by Fiscal Services. May I get a motion?
So move Helzerman.
Support Gross.
Moved by Helzerman, supported by Gross. Any comment, any analysis, any questions needed? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Helzerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Dric?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to 12D. It's number 2024-08-107. It's a resolution to concur with the Livingston County Aeronautical Facilities Board to enter into a grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation to fund the design of the snow removal equipment building at the Livingston County Airport. May I get a motion?
So move Deaton. Support Domas.
Moved by Deaton, support by Domas. Does anyone wish to have further elucidation, analysis, or questions, discussion? Seeing none, I'll close discussion, and this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Helzerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Dric?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. We're on to item 12E. It's number 2024-08-106, 108, excuse me. It's a resolution to concur to concur with the Livingston County Aeronautical Facilities Board to enter into agreement with C and S Companies of Livonia, Michigan, for the final design of a snow removable equipment building brought to us and at the airport. May I get a motion?
So move Domas. Support Gross.
I've heard motion by Domas, support by Gross. Any commissioner desiring question, answer, analysis, further data? I'll close discussion, and we'll move to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Helzerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Mr. Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Dric?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. We're on to item number 12F. It's number 2024-08-109. It's a resolution authorizing construction of the Winans Lake Drain and distribution of general fund vision tour funding brought to us by the Drain Commissioner.
So move Sample. Support Deaton.
Motion by Sample, support by Deaton. Any desire for questions, answers, further information, details? Seeing none, I'll close discussion, and we'll move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Helzerman?
Yes.
Mr. Domas?
Yes.
Mr. Sample?
Yes.
Mr. Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Dric?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. We're on to 12G. It's number 2024-08-110. It's a resolution authorizing improvements to the Handy Number 15 Drain and distribution of general vision tour funding. It's brought to us by the Drain Commissioner. May I get a motion?
So move Helzerman. Support Domas.
Motion by Helzerman, support by Domas. Any discussion, questions, complaints, analysis? I'll close discussion. We'll go to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Helzerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Dric?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Item 12H reads number 2024-08-111. It's a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Child and Parent Legal Representation Grant for Fiscal Year 2025 for the Juvenile Court. May I get a motion?
So move Deaton. Support Domas.
Motion by Deaton, support by Commissioner Domas. We'll move to discussion phase. Any questions, any analysis, complaints? Seeing none, we'll close discussion and go to roll call vote.
Commissioner Helzerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Dric?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Fiani?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Item 12I reads by number 2024-08-112. It's a resolution authorizing Fiscal Year 2025 Memorandum of Understanding and Cash-Matching Funding for Behavioral Health Managed Care Services and Cash Matching Funding for Behavioral Health Managed Care Services - Wraparound for the Juvenile Court. May I get a motion?
So moved Gross.
Support Smith.
Thank you. Motion by Gross, support by Smith. Move into discussion phase. Anybody wish discussion for the questions, answers, data? Seeing none, I'll close discussion, and this is a voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we've got a nine to zero unanimous voice vote on 12I. We're at 12 letter J. That's a nice letter. It's number 2024-08-113. It's a resolution authorizing contract award to Enterprise Fleet Management to provide automotive fleet management services for our carpool. May I get a motion?
So moved Deaton.
Support Helserman.
Motion by Deaton, support by Commissioner Helserman. We'll move into discussion phase. Does anybody wish to have questions answered or analysis or comment? In that case, I'll close discussion. We'll move to voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the voice vote is a nine to zero passage for 12J. We're now on to 12K, which is 024-08-114. It's a resolution authorizing Livingston County to host cooperative contracts for automotive fleet management services for Michigan counties and other municipalities through the Michigan Association of Counties Co-Pro Plus Procurement Program benefiting and coming through us by carpool. May I get a motion?
So moved Helserman, support Smith.
I've heard motion by Helserman and support by Commissioner Smith. We move to discussion. Any commissioner wish to have discussion, comment, analysis, further facts? Seeing none, it's going to be a voice vote. All those kindly say aye if you're in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's a nine zero passage for 12K. We're on to 12L. It is number 2024-08-115. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with Indian Trails, Inc., DBA Michigan Flyer LLC to provide airport transportation services brought to us by LETS. May I get a motion to discuss?
So moved Deaton.
Support Domas.
Thank you. I've heard Deaton as the movement and Domas as the second. Moving into discussion. Yes. All those wishing, then I'll close discussion because I see no hands waving. All those that wish to adopt kindly say aye. It's a voice vote.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine zero, it's adopted. We're to 12M. It's item 2024-08-116. It reads Resolution Authorizing the Replacement of Asphalt Parking Lots and Driveway at the Transportation Complex, also known as LETS. May I get a motion?
So moved Deaton.
Thank you.
Helserman.
I've heard motion by Deaton and support by Helserman. Any discussion? Time to discuss if anyone wishes to. Seeing none, I'll close discussion, and we'll go with a roll call vote.
Mr. Helserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. We're on number 12 letter N. It's 2024-08-117. It's a resolution for the 2024 Veterans' Millage brought to us by Equalization.
So moved Sample.
Support Helserman.
I heard a motion by Sample and a second by Helserman. We're in discussion phase.
Who is speaking to this issue?
Sue? Not Sue.
Ramon?
Ramon is on.
Oh, I just see it. Perfect. Ramon, would you unmute yourself and be available for questions or make a short presentation? It's your choice.
Yes, sir. Good evening, gentlemen. Commissioners, do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I wrote up my talking points. I'll try to keep it as as quick as possible. So what I wrote earlier in the day, I'm happy this millage rate discussion has finally hit the agenda since it has been postponed since May and that we'll finally walk away with a number tonight. I'll see you again in eight months about this topic since it has historically been decided upon every May so that the state receives our rate for the following year. I want to thank those who are present tonight and listening on Zoom as they are the ones who vote for our millage every six years, and it has passed every time. Without you and your vote, we cannot maintain operations for our military veterans, those who have sacrificed so much for this country. I know the residents of this county cherish their veterans. For those who don't owe me, I'm an Army veteran of 25 years, all active duty service. I achieved the highest rank an enlisted man can attain. I don't say that to brag. I say that so you, the residents of Livingston County, know that your Veterans Department is in good hands as I have overseen two battalions of infantry soldiers, one of which being a 750-man infantry battalion, and deployed them to Afghanistan. I have overseen millions of dollars of equipment and supplies throughout my service and ensured we utilize our resources wisely. I have proven that I know how to manage our most cherished resource, our people, and of course, all the finance that goes along with it. Our department provides a tremendous service for our veterans, and every line on our budget goes towards veterans and their families. For transparency, we must pay for the utilities at our office, which keeps the lights on and phones ringing, the internet that allows for us to submit VA claims so that our veterans are connected to VA healthcare and disability compensation, in some cases, survivors' benefits. In fact, as per the last GDX provided by the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs, the VA dispersed $2.3 million in benefits to veterans of Livingston County in FY 2023. That money allows them to put food on their table, pay for a roof over their head, and in some instances, enjoy dinner at one of our local restaurants. The point is, the disability compensation that my veterans service officers help connect veterans to goes back into this community one way or another. Some of my budget must pay for the annual recertification of the national accreditation those service officers must maintain. Although transportation to medical appointments within a 50-mile radius is free to veterans and their spouses or widows, we must pay for the maintenance that keeps those vehicles on the road, and we must pay for gasoline. We are charged with administering emergency relief funds for those less fortunate to get them back on their feet and back to a sustainable lifestyle. I assure you, we are good stewards of these funds and ensure protocols in place so that abuse of this program does not happen. We must pay for maintenance of our facility. We must pay salaries for the employees who make everything happen and are changing lives each and every day. The list goes on. The point being, although not everything is tangible to the end user, everything we do in our office goes back to the community. Inflation hits us the same as everyone else. The flag boxes we provide to grieving widows so that they may place their veterans' flags in and display proudly, the stamps we pay, we put on our mailers to encourage newly discharged veterans to utilize our services, the paper that we use for much-needed information that we hand out to our clients, the swag that people enjoy getting at our outreach events, et cetera. All has gone up in price. On November 8, 2022, your constituents voted for the millage at a max rate of .1127 to be extended another six years. The max rate had previously been levied every year from 2018 to 2021. In '22 and '23, we lowered it because of a cash reserve that had been built up largely due to being understaffed. The plan, which some of you were involved in, was to spend down the cash reserve to an amount equal to one year's operational budget and maintain it at that level going forward. Our operational budget for FY '25 is $1.2 million. The plan, which many of you heard last year at this time, was to have that amount down to $1 million this year, which we have finally achieved. However, now I understand a couple of you want to steer away from that plan and only keep 800,000 cash reserve, maybe less. None of us ever imagined something like the COVID pandemic happening like it did in '22, or I'm sorry, in 2020. If something like that happens again, many more people will be in need of emergency relief, just like we saw in 2020, which will put a hefty dent in our operational budget very quickly. And if for some reason we are unable to collect millage, we will utilize the cash reserve, which will dwindle fast. As you can see, the cash reserve amount doesn't add up to our annual budget, which means we will be forced to reduce services at that time. I've heard the idea that if that occurs, we can utilize money from the general fund or we can max out the millage rate at that time. I don't feel those are viable or logical solutions. If we must incrementally raise the rate back to the maximum, which the voters voted for to begin with, and we're accustomed to paying, that would be more palatable to your constituents and even myself as a Livingston County taxpayer. If we think of new initiatives and expand what we do in the future, that will increase the budget, which will most likely increase the mill rate not to exceed .1127, of course. I mention this simply for expectation management. Lastly, I'll inform you that over the course of the last few years, the Michigan Veterans Affairs Agency has provided us a grant based on the veteran population, which has covered one employee's salary and a portion of our rent. However, they have been expanding their department, hiring more personnel, frankly, duplicating efforts that our county offices are already doing, and by doing so, are taking from the grant amounts we have been accustomed to. As that money fades away, I must budget more for personnel cost and rent. This year, we are allocated $140,436. If that goes away, that will dwindle the cash reserve as well. I'll close with this. The current millage rate of .0770 on an average residence in Livingston County is $10.59 per year. The requested mill rate of .0918 on an average residence equals $12.62, a $2.03 increase. I recommend adding to the resolution what the agreed-upon fund balance will be for my department moving forward so that we don't have such differences in opinion every year as we discuss this. Thank you, gentlemen.
Any questions for Director Baca? Start there. Any questions? Commissioner Domas?
Thank you. Not a question necessarily, Director, but a compliment on the outstanding job you've done here for our county veterans. Years ago, when I first took the office of County Commissioner, one of the first places I stopped was downstairs on the parking lot side of the building downstairs, where the Veterans Department had its own office. And Bob Heinel was a director at that time. And it was a small office with Bob, the secretary, part-time, and a gopher. I called him a gopher because every time you needed something, he would go for it. And at any rate, when I walked into Bob's office, introduced myself, I said, "I'm a veteran, and what exactly does the department provide for veterans?" And so Bob looked at me, and he looked kind of sad, and he said, "Well, we we can provide a $300 check to you for your food expenses, and I'm waiting for the rest of it, expecting there's a long list of stuff." Now, that's where he stopped. And I said, "It's got to be more difficult than that, Bob." Yes, it's essentially what they did was they provided forms that they helped you fill out. You took them down to the Veterans Hospital in Ann Arbor. Now, that's a fact. Since then, we've gone through a number of directors for this department. And by the way, we never have a constant number of veterans being dealt with by our Veterans Department. There's an ever-growing population of veterans here in Livingston County. People who were born and raised here, people who moved here. This is a desirable place to live, and so the job keeps getting bigger and bigger. And and I have a particular affinity to to veterans. I am one, and members of, so are several members of my family. And every one of those men and women who join the military go to work every day without the expectation that their children will see them when they come home at night. And 50,000 of them who went to Vietnam fell into that category. And let me take a break, would you, Chair?
Certainly. Certainly. Commissioner Nakagiri, did you have your hand up? Yes, I did. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I ask a few questions of our director, I wanted to state for the record, I have the utmost respect for Director Baca. I reflect back on the time a few years ago, a couple of years ago, where was able to work with him, and he was very successful at getting the list of recently released veterans that moved to Livingston County. It was something that had been attempted for many years to get that list so that we knew here in Livingston County who, you know, which veterans were moving into the county so that we could do outreach to them, to the veterans. And it was through Director Baca's persistence that we finally got that list. So I tip my hat to him. With that being said, with regards to the the budget, the it is my understanding that if we maintain the millage where it's at, at .770, that we do not affect negatively any of the, I mean, we're paying for every program that was asked for in the 2025 budget. Is my understanding correct?
Have I understood your question correctly, sir? The budget will not be affected. We'll still push through for the budget. However, we will have to dip into the current cash reserve, therefore dwindling it further down than we had originally agreed upon.
When you, so I want to reiterate that point. So if we kept the millage where it's at, I'm saying this for the record, that we are not affecting any programs. We are reducing the level of cash reserves. With regards to the cash reserves, I I don't know. I'm puzzled where this number of one year of cash reserves has come from. I certainly did not agree to that. I don't know that there was a resolution of the board agreeing to that. Can you help me understand where did that number come from?
Yes, sir, absolutely. So you were the chair last year when we mentioned this and we went through this number. With all that said, the number comes from the third party that you all paid to have this study from the PFM Financials, all right? On there, it states for best operating practice, 120 days of cash reserve. Well, we can't collect every 120 days. Our our department doesn't operate on that. We got one shot at this. It's one time, and we get it through the winter taxes. So with that said, you do the multiplication, 120 days times three is 360. Their number comes out to right at 965,000, hence just about the $1 million that we've spoken about now for quite some time. And in fact, when I came into the office in June of '22, it was already told to me the plan. It was mentioned, this is what we have for cash cash reserve. The goal is to spend it down to $1 million, and hence, that's what we've done. In fact, the treasurer wrote a nice letter over the course of the weekend and sent it to everyone, and it further explains the best operating practice as far as keeping your operational funds intact for an entire operating year if you must dip into it. So this this plan is not something that Ramon Baca has made up over the course of this past few months. It's in fact something that I know since June of '22 that I came into his office that was in place.
The for the for the purposes of discussion and enhancement on our information, the county's general fund, we target a reserve of 50% to 60%. So and that reserve of 50% to 60% gives us a superior financial position. I I say superior because we, it is one of the elements needed to get the top bond rating AAA. So we're able to get a superior, in fact, I'm going to say the top rating. There aren't many counties in the 3,000 thereabout counties in the United States that have a AAA bond rating. We're able to get that AAA bond rating with 50% to 60% reserves. We are asking, the department, the Veterans Department is asking for a reserve of 80% to 85%. I I think that is too much. I think that when the county as a whole operates with this top financial rating with 50% to 60%, I think that's the appropriate level of reserves. Even at the current millage rate, the we will still be at the above that 50% to 60% reserves at the end of 2025. And I just think that in these times of inflation with government spending out of control, that we here at Livingston County ought to set an example and not be asking taxpayers, even though it's a small amount, for any more money than what is needed to fund our operation. for any more money than what is needed to fund our operations. So when, when I hear that we are able to fund everything that we want, we are essentially using the money to pad our reserves, I, I would rather keep the money in the taxpayer's pocket because we are not impacting programs. And from, from that standpoint, well, I'll relinquish the floor and let other commissioners speak to the issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I may, I'd like to ask our Chief Financial Officer, Cindy Irvanis, if she could help me out with something? Possibly? That might be appropriate. We've heard reference to the budget. The fiscal year twenty four budget for Veteran Services called for roughly nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of revenue and about a million two in expenses.
Correct.
That was the budget.
That's correct.
And through July, Veteran Services are tracking on that. They've already received roughly nine hundred and fifty or sixty thousand dollars. And their spending rate is roughly a hundred thousand a month. So through July, they were just short of seven hundred thousand, which would get them pretty close to a million two by the end of the year. So they're living for all purposes in their budget. When we get to the end of the year, we have revenue of nine hundred and say fifty thousand and expense of a million two is a shortfall, two hundred and fifty thousand. Where will that come from?
That will come from the department's fund balance, which is the cash reserves that Director Baca is talking about.
If they have roughly a million dollars, that would drop down to seven hundred and fifty approximately.
Um, I, I'm, I don't, I don't recall off the top of my head what their fund balance is, but yes, if that was, if it was a million dollars, I would bring it down.
And the proposed fiscal year twenty five budget that we had last year, which is matter of record, similarly called for revenue of nine hundred fifty thousand and expense of a million two, give or take a little bit. So it's another two hundred plus thousand shortfall, which would have to come from the reserve fund.
It would continue to come from the reserves.
So if, if the current numbers track, is the way I'm suggesting they might, and if the numbers continue to track according to budget next year, that in December of twenty twenty five, we could see upwards of a half a million dollars coming out of the reserve fund.
If the actuals tracked what the budget was last year, you know, we're doing our twenty five, twenty five budget process this year, so those will be revised.
But if something terrible doesn't crawl out from under a rock, that's what we're looking at.
Well, they'll continue to use fund balance for whatever the excess expenses over their revenue is each year.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. One other comment I'd like to make is in the August primary election, Green Oak Township had three ballot proposals on the ballot. Increase in millage for the fire department, an increase in millage for the police, and a proposed increase for township operations. The fire millage and the police millage both passed. The township government one did not. With the approval of those two military requests for police and fire, Green Oak residents with a home valued at four hundred thousand dollars are looking at a tax increase of about eighty dollars per year. So if we approve this military request as presented for the Veterans Division, we're looking at two dollars. I, I don't know about my fellow colleagues in Green Oak Township, but two dollars is going to get lost in the roundup for the two approved millages for fire and police. I don't know how many other townships will have that situation. I do know that there were fourteen military quests covering parks and recreation, sports, other activities, school. Nine of those millages were approved, count including the two for Green Oak. So I think a majority of our taxpayers are willing to pay a little bit more in their taxes to fund these various activities. And I think they would be supportive if we pass this resolution to keep the, to increase the millage for the Veteran Services Division. And with that, I'll yield my time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Smith, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just, I just want to highlight two items that might have been brushed over a little quickly. You know, the, the county has some real expertise. One, we engaged a third-party consultant for a lot of, a lot of our analysis of our numbers with PFM. And, and they have recommended the budget fund of about a million dollars. And our treasurer, who has a wealth of experience and understands the flow of money in and out of that department better than anybody. And she has recommended a fund balance of about a million dollars. And I, I, it's very easy to get caught up in our feelings. We might feel this is too much or that's too much. But we should not ignore the expertise that we are presented with. So I would hope to move forward on this as presented. I yield.
Thank you. Back to Commissioner Domas.
You have the floor again, sir.
I wish I could tell you what it would take for you to approve this. But it's up to each of us to decide whether we know the cost of this or the value of this. Nobody can, nobody can duplicate the services that our veterans have provided for us. I don't care whether you're part of the Building Department, the Health Department, DPW. These are special people. Thank you.
Any other commissioner wish to talk? Commissioner Helsnerman, proceed.
I have a question. I know that if we don't do this increase this year, that I think next year it would be very evident that an increase is needed. So my, my, my question piggybacks off Commissioner Gross's question. So when this money comes in, this money will come in, it'll come in next year for twenty twenty five budget, which right now we're dealing with a twenty four budget, which would take us down to seventy five, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. By the time we get to the next, when we get to consider this next year, because every year we, we consider every single millage in the county that has to be approved by this board. This is not the only a millage. And we approve every millage every year. The amount of every millage every year. And this is, you know, in my, I'm in my eighth year as a, as a commissioner, this is the first time that we spent more than three minutes talking about a millage. And so it, it, I can understand that maybe this year we might not need it, but for sure, next year we will need it. And we will have the same ability next year to adjust the millage up or down in this regard. So in my mind, it's kind of, when do we make the decision? In, in the Building Department, for example, they had a fund balance that was growing. And so we had the Building Department or the Director suggested that they cut the rates for inspections, which, which they did. And, but at a certain point, you have to come to an equilibrium. And that's what we're looking for here on this board. What is the equilibrium that will give us, will give the veterans that cushion that they need? And it's kind of the question, because I think to a person on this board, we all support the veterans and, and the good work that's happening at the veterans. And especially under Ramon's leadership, the veterans have come to a, again, a place of stability and we appreciate all of that. And so in my mind, it's a question, do we do it this year or next year? If we do it this year and it's too much, we can pull back next year. So you know, I, I've, I've, I'm in support of the raise at this particular point. But I understand that the veterans will still be well-served if we keep the rate as it is. But next year, we might even have to, if we don't do it this year, we might have to raise it even more next year. So we, we don't know the future. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Commissioner Deaton, your chair recognizes you.
Thank you, Chairman. As everybody knows, I'm a Navy veteran. And I had the opportunity today to take one of our constituents to Veteran Services for a tour so they could see our, our wonderful facility and, and meet some of the folks doing that great work. And I encourage, you know, everybody in the county, you know, check out that building. It's right next to the Secretary of State Office. So the reason I bring that up is we've done a pretty good job in the county of working with Vietnam veterans, but we fall short in working with the underserved, which is a lot of the veterans coming back now and through the Gulf War, my age group and below. And I'd had the opportunity to speak with Director Baca after we went over the budget, you know, last week and discuss this resolution about, you know, what the future lies. And so he's not only looking at right now what we need, but he's looking at the future. And so I'm for the resolution as presented to us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Certainly. Any further comment? Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yeah, I want to address a couple of points. And I want to make it clear, these, these are not feelings, these are facts. The Government Finance Officers Association has said, you know, that we, to have adequate reserves is about two to three months, twenty five to thirty three percent. If, if this, if we maintain the millage that we have, we're north of sixty percent. That's not a feeling, that's a fact. It is also a fact that we are not cutting programs. We're doing everything that the Veterans Department has requested for twenty twenty five. And we'll be able to do that by keeping the millage the same. That's not my opinion, that's what the Director has said. It is also a fact that we have our general fund at fifty to sixty percent. It gives us a Moody's bond rating of triple A. And, and that is a fact. If we said, well, you know, there's merit to what PFM and what our treasurer want to do with eighty percent. I, I asked the question rhetorically, why don't we have eighty percent for the general fund? I, I don't want it. We, we don't need it. So it, saying that a department of the county needs to have eighty, eighty-five percent, when we get superior ratings, financial ratings with fifty to sixty percent, I, I just think it's I'll just say ridiculous that we're even having this discussion. If we, there was a lady that spoke earlier tonight. She spoke about transportation. She's been here before. She cited a statistic, I haven't confirmed this, but I wrote it down. She said that according to sources that she relies on, that twenty eight percent of citizens in Livingston County struggle to make ends meet. That's a quote. And so I, I am not in favor of taking more money than government needs to do the job that it's supposed to do. And from that standpoint, I will offer an amendment to the resolution to have the millage instead of what it stated at zero point nine one eight, to have it stay the same as it is currently at zero point zero seven seven zero.
There is an amendment that's been offered by Commissioner Nakagiri to amend the resolution to read point zero zero, point zero seven seven zero, the same as it is now. Is there a second?
I'm going to second it.
Seconded by Mr. Fiani. I'll open up discussion then on the amendment. If anyone wishes to have a say about the amendment. Time to discuss now.
So is that myself as the director to say something there, Commissioner?
No, it's Commissioner's time. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
I, I just want to add, I don't want to reiterate everything. I just want to add a point. Let's say that we ran into something totally unexpected. And that, you know, we have, well, I wouldn't look forward to doing it. We've done it in the past in terms of infusing other funds, non-general fund departments with general funds. I know that that has also happened at township level. I can specifically speak to Tyrone Township, whose sewer fund is underwater. They, they've gotten funding from their general fund, which the sewer fund will ultimately have to pay back. And so if we have this catastrophic unforeseen event, we do have the financial strength to backstop the Veterans Department. We do have the ability to loan them money. We do have the ability next year to raise the millage to the, the level, up to the level that was authorized by the voters and pay back the general fund. So I, I think in terms of insurance, which reserves our insurance, we have plenty of insurance. Thank you very much.
Any other commissioner wish to speak about the amendment? I'd like to take a moment. Commissioner Gross, I was interested in how much the veterans would have at the end of twenty twenty four, and that seemed to be where you were talking about. So I looked in the twenty four budget on page ninety seven. And it seems under projected fund balance for twenty twenty four, the Veteran Services would have a million six. And a million six would go pretty well against two years of two fifty each. Now, maybe it changes as they're going through and spending money, but that was at least the projection. Thank you, sir. When I looked in the budget book, I did not check on fund balance. I just looked at the budget for the Veteran Services Department on page one sixty nine.
Okay.
And it showed a budget of nine hundred and plus or minus a bit, nine hundred and fifty thousand. Revenue, expense of a million two. So there's a shortfall of two hundred and fifty in, according to our financial officer, that would have to come from their reserve fund. Or the general fund. Which sounds like a million six is the projected reserve fund for December twenty twenty four. It was my understanding the reserve fund is in the neighborhood of a million dollars. Well, I think that was the, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that was the suggestion of the Treasurer back in twenty twenty one, when they were facing a millage that had expired. They knew they had to go get a vote. And they wanted some insurance in case the vote failed. So I believe that was a con, a, a date, certain context that no longer is applicable because it passed and we've got millages out to twenty twenty seven. I think that's where the million came from. And that's, I think, the memo that we got from our Treasurer Nash for the million. Would it be possible to get ahold of Treasurer Nash somehow to find out what the exact balance is in the reserve fund right now? Might she be?
She's online.
Director Nash, can you hear the question?
Director Nash, can you hear the question?
Yes, can you hear me, Commissioners?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. The million dollars was not a time.
No, that's not our question. Our question is what might be the ending reserve balance on December 31st, 2024?
So I need, so Ramon, there is the spreadsheet, I believe, the Veterans Department presented that showed the calculation of how we got to the millage. There's a spreadsheet, I believe, that shows, I'm looking for it.
It's like on page five, guys. It's there. It's the Excel document that I provided you all. It says fiscal year 25. It talks about the current fund balance plus the revenues.
Excuse me, Commissioner, Director Baca. Director Nash has the floor. Treasurer Nash, excuse me.
So I'm looking.
Do you have an idea, as we're approaching the end of this year, what the balance might be? Is the estimate we're looking for?
Looking, if you don't mind, give me one moment, please.
Certainly. Cindy, do you have a help?
Well, based off of the budget for 2024.
Excuse me, we cannot hear you, Cindy.
Million fifty-six. Okay.
So if I may ask a question, Mr. Chair.
Treasurer Nash.
Yes.
You heard that number. Does that comport with your general understanding as to the estimate for the end of 2024?
Can you repeat the number? It was hard to hear, please.
A million fifty-six thousand.
That sounds correct, yes.
Terrific. Thank you for your input. Commissioner Wes, go ahead.
No, I yeah, so my question is with just north of a million dollars, if we are I think the budget, going by memory here, so this is a question, hopefully our CFO can answer. We're projecting, I'll say deficit spending to draw down the fund balance in the to the tune of about a quarter of a million dollars, 250,000. So that would leave us with a fund balance of seven, approximately 750,000, is my understanding correct?
At the end of 25? At the end of 25, again, depending on what the budget comes in at, about 241,000. I'm sorry, about 850,000.
Which on a percentage basis, I saw somewhere that we're projecting to spend 1.25 million in 2025. And so that's what, how much did you say?
I'm showing for 25. 25, you have to remember, we're in the process of doing the 25.
Right.
So based off of what the initial request was, it was 1.23 million. What I show I'm sorry, about a useless of about 241,000.
So the reserve would end up being projected to be on a percentage basis, that's approximately 66%, which I would reiterate, you know, we operate our general fund on 50 to 60%. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? I would like to observe that we have two choices. First, the 09 number, and second is the 07 number. The 09 is the new one. About 19% increase. And the current rate, there's no increase at 07. A vote for the 09 allows the Veterans Department to spend exactly what they want to spend, 1.2 million for the whole 12 months of 2025. But it raises taxes on veterans and all the other county taxpayers. Now, a vote on the current rate allows the Veterans Department to spend exactly what they want to spend for 2025, 1.2 million. But it does not raise taxes on the veterans that pay taxes or all the other county taxpayers, and the veteran beneficiaries of that money are happy. There was a kind email by Director Baca dated 8/21 in answer to a question by Commissioner Fiani of would all the would the whole 1.2 million in your budget get spent if the current rate stayed the same? He said, absolutely. We'll take a little bit out of the fund reserves. Okay. I think the number of people that are happiest is to keep the current rate because you have happy beneficiaries, you have a happy spending of 1.2 million. The county taxpayers are happy they're not spending more. The veteran taxpayers are happy they're not spending more. And the other side, we have some people that are so happy about getting their taxes raised because veterans pay taxes and then their other county taxpayers are not veterans. It's kind of like if we go with the 09, we're hitting a single. And if we go with the 07, we're hitting a triple. We're getting a triple basis out of it. And we have sufficient funds in our money so that any insurance policy needed would only happen if there was a serious disaster of some sort. The disaster that they worried about back in 2021 was having zero money come in for a period of time before another millage. I can see how an insurance policy would be important facing a millage that might not pass. But we have a millage in this case that's going to continue on till 2027. So I'm leaning toward voting for getting all those veteran beneficiaries of the 1.2 million, their 1.2 million, exactly what the director wants and exactly what that board down there wanted. And it also makes county taxpayers happy and the veteran taxpayers happy. That's where I'm leaning. But it's two choices. Thank you. Saying that, any further comment or discussion? Commissioner Gross, you have the floor.
Thank you. I would just like to point out that if we keep the status quo, we are looking at at least one, possibly two years where the reserve fund will be depleted by $250,000, give or take a little bit per year, with potentially being down to a half a million dollars at the end of 25. I think that's risky business. I think we're far better off to increase the millage rate by a minimal amount. It's almost roundoff to keep the Veteran Services Division from operating at a loss position year after year. It gets us closer to having a balanced budget.
Would it be acceptable, after we vote on this amendment, to listen to you if you wanted a different number amendment? Do you want to circle, do you want me to circle back and ask you after this vote?
I'd like to see the results of the vote.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying. I'm just making the point that we have an opportunity to have the Veteran Services Division operate at nearly a break-even situation.
Ma'am Clerk, I'd like a roll call vote on the amendment that's been offered to change the millage rate to point 0770. A roll call.
Mr. Halserman?
No.
Commissioner Domas?
No.
Commissioner Sample?
No.
Mr. Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
No.
Motion fails?
That one fails. Circling back now, you have the floor, Commissioner Gross, if you have a number in mind that would be different.
The number I would have in mind is keeping the millage rate at point 0918, as proposed.
Okay, I took it a different way then. So we're back now. Any further discussion or a closed discussion on the 0918, and we'll have a vote. Last chance to discuss, complain, object, comment. Not seeing any, that discussion is now closed. Please have a roll call vote on the point 0918.
Commissioner Halserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
No.
Commissioner Drake?
No.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
No.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are now off agenda item number 12N. And we're moving to number 13, accounts payable reports. 13A reads claims dated August 26, 2024, payables dated July 28 through August 16, 2024. May I get a motion for a combination of 13A and B?
So move Gross.
Support Deaton.
Moved by Gross, support by Commissioner Deaton. Any discussion? Seeing none, discussions closed. Voice vote, kindly say aye if you support a 13A and B.
Aye.
That's a nine to zero voice vote for 13A and B. They both pass. Next is call to the public number two. This time, it's a two-minute call to the public. And we'll start with cards in the room.
We have no cards in the room.
Krista, have you anyone with their hand up?
Yes, sir. I have Ellen Niketan.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you. You've got two minutes. When you're comfortable, ready to proceed, go ahead.
Awesome, thank you. Hi, my name is Ellen Niketan. So some of you may remember that two weeks ago, I made the comment that you were playing chicken with the veterans' millage. And I am seeing that that is once again true. So let me let me tell you something. Last year, this very same board was presented with arguably a bigger increase than we are having this year. And last year, there was no discussion. It was passed unanimously. Now, I don't have a problem with that. But it seems now today, there is a lot of discussion and there is a lot of arguments of increased taxes. Every argument that was made was applicable last year. And last year's increase was bigger. Last year, there was no headly rollback either. Well, whereas this year, there is one. So what I'm seeing here is the only difference between this year and last year is the fact that there is an election coming up. This is the only reason we're having this discussion here. The only reason it took so long for you to decide why there is all this talk from the three commissioners that wanted to keep the rate the same. There was no issue with raising it last year. I have no issue with raising it myself. But the only reason that issue exists is to try to make yourself look good to your voters. Does that make sense? Last year, it was a 36% increase, which is bigger than the 19% increase we're having today. Thank you.
You're welcome. Another Zoom, Krista?
Yes, sir. I have Toblerary Monroe.
Toblerary Monroe, you have the floor after you give us your residence and you have two minutes when you're ready to proceed. Have you unmuted yourself?
She's unmuted. We just cannot hear her.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, hi, I'll start my two minutes now.
Yes.
What's that?
Correct.
Okay, I'll start it now. My two minutes is starting now. I'd like to say that you were more than happy to host the guy who got out of the military by claiming he had bone spurs last Monday. You know, I find that kind of silly that you would host, you know, the wannabe president, the one-term loser. Donald Trump, you had him overspend county resources on that, right? Okay, yeah, you won't give money to the thing you support the most. I'm talking about the three gentlemen who voted against giving the military extra money. That's kind of a joke. That's my opinion. I'm allowed to say it. Yeah, really interesting there. You're not going to try to support the vets, you three. Also hosting Shane Trejo and Donald Trump, a couple of bigots. That's pretty fascinating to me that you would do that, and yet pass the buck on the military. Unbelievable. You claim to support them. You pass the buck on the military. You're being sued by your own courts. You let the devoted barn owner like put off her court date, let the animal cruelty be ongoing. You let the Carolyn Henry or whoever the prosecutor was, I know I shouldn't name names, but they let the attempted child kidnapper go free. Reader almost let Floyd Jarvy go free, hadn't our government intervened to protect our citizens. So you're doing a very poor job of protecting our citizens and our military, I might add. Thank you.
What was your residence, ma'am?
I already told you.
Our clerk says no. The clerk didn't hear it.
Well, you ought to know by now, and you ought to know how to pronounce my name. It's City of Howell.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Any further Zoom, Krista?
No, Commissioner, I do not see any.
Very good. The second call to the public is now closed. Gentlemen, it's item number 20, under 15, is our motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, Halserman. Support Deaton.
Motion by Halserman, support by Deaton. Voice vote, all those in favor, kindly say aye.
Aye.
Nine to zero, we are adjourned.